Welcome. We're having a meeting, Bob, back here. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
No, it's also good.
One second.
Also good.
I spoke to approve the agenda myself, yes, Jason?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Steve? Yes, Mike? Yes, Vicki?
Yes.
Or Karen?
Okay. I guess in... Starting with ours, I guess we had a meeting one week ago and had discussion as far as the possibilities of students co-op with junior high and playing you in Creighton. And I guess at that, at that meeting, our feedback I kinda got from our community was that just use common sense, you know? Kinda do what's practical, but certainly have the option out there to, to make sure that, you know, kids have the opportunity to participate if they so desire. And I would want to add something to their thoughts around on how this perception we got from our parents.
Yeah, you pretty much said, I think, you know, and basically what it is is make sure that, you know, your kids or our kids have the opportunity, especially at the seventh grade level, to have a chance to participate, whether it's a plan view in Creighton or wherever, you know, that we can work together with that and make sure those kids get up and do it. And I think that's part of what we've been hearing from the audience every night also, so depending on what value take of that.
I agree, what's best for our kids, so they have opportunities that sometimes aren't gonna be available in the future.
Jeff, I feel like you had a pretty good turnout as far as a random number of people, you know, good cross-section, it wasn't pretty slight.
It's not very many people showed up.
Not a good percentage.
So yeah, it's hard to judge sometimes, you know? You know, at some point you take the information you have and make a decision and move on. And I guess that's what we're here for. But there again, you're trying to accumulate as much information as you can and...
And on that note, we have our survey done and we did add two questions specifically pertaining to the junior high sports and one pertaining specifically to Plainview. That's supposed to be back in by next Friday, so...
It just did not doubt?
Yes, it did.
When did that get knocked down?
Yesterday, today.
And you guys, you've done a survey before too, so you, you know too that participation isn't always what you'd like it to be. There again, you have to drop them, what information you can get and what information you have.
So basically, you're kind of in the situation where doing anything for next year is probably out because you don't know where your people stand yet or what decisions you can make or you can go with this for a little longer. By the time you do, if it's a yes, it's gonna be too late for the coming school year for them.
And my, I guess my thought is, you know, to say that we wouldn't have the opportunity for your kids to come over and practice and play, I think is an open option. It's just, I don't know if we have the ability at this point to go any further than that, you know? And do some, you know, negotiation with that thought, you know, if that's a possibility.
It sounded like at the meeting, we had our, you know, athletic director, and it is sounding like it's running late. It's getting late for, you know, trying to get any kind of system other than offering the opportunity at this time maybe if you got, you know, whoever has most kids or we, you know, you either come here and then if down the road, we go there or at least that, that option is open to everybody. I think we'd be worried. Talking for me, I guess, I guess what I'm, I'm looking at is if that's the way it has to be, I definitely wanna see those kids having the opportunity to play.
I'm interested in seeing the kids have an opportunity to play, but I wanna do it truly co-op. In fact, I would like to do it with all junior high schools, boys and girls, like, let you guys feel about that. And I think that it's a good, pretty late to do it, particularly when you look at the idea that we have contracts for those schools, for junior high and things like that. The only way I could see that we could do it this at all is if we put the teams together and had two teams come from the teams together to play the schedule. Like playing new games, like playing new games, and use two teams that are in the name of the whole team. Would be the only way I could see, I would say, if we put them together, we're probably gonna have to look for eleven man games, I would assume. And that's, so now you're sort of going to schedule out.
I'm gonna ask you a question. He said probably eleven man games, is, maybe the athletic director should help us here. Is there a ruling in junior high that if you have excellent population, you have to play eleven man?
But if you have enough kids...
But I'm looking at both high schools are eight men. We wanna, we probably wanna keep our junior high playing the same, so they feel that they would...
But if you come up with two teams instead of one, you could play the schedule. Now, you didn't wanna make equal teams instead of the good teams and bad teams. If you're gonna go play two other towns, whole team, you don't wanna send your, you know, your younger kids over there to play their good team and your really good team to play their social team, you know, the other way.
I just, we could do it this way.
Yeah. But also even by doing that, like we talked, you're probably gonna have to have four coaches, 'cause you're not gonna make two coaches go, probably have two coaches coaching. You're gonna make them both go to both sets of games, you know? Or you're gonna have four coaches so that two go to this game schedule and the other two go to this schedule. You know, that's a big load if you make two coaches go to all, double the games.
The other issue that came up there is with the varsity, you start pulling junior vars, your assistant coaches and you have them going to junior high games and when it starts affecting our varsity football, then we gotta look at that too.
You don't do that now, you don't have any...
You're looking at, you're looking at varsity football, junior varsity football, junior high with the same set of assistants here. We have two coaches that do all, all those. So if those two coaches are in a junior high game, you got a junior varsity game, if you play a junior high game this day and a junior varsity game this day, now you've taken two, two coaches out of varsity football practice twice during the week and you only have three real days of preparation anyway for a pregame day.
It's not just with football either, it's with all of our sports. I mean, all of our sports, we use the assistants as the, you know, is there...
Well, they try to play junior high and JV on the same day, but sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't.
I think we do two varsity.
These guys know, they're the ones that do it, Zach and Kyle.
And I mean, we've already been split sometimes where they'll take the junior high. I'd have the junior high just come in itself. Falling away.
So one of them will go to Randolph and one, one will play here, or one will go to Hartington and one will play, you know, I mean, it's stretched out. So then I've got, I've got, and if it's JV, you know, you're taking the number of, number of players that you have. So I'm sitting there with a limited number of players, really not getting anything productive that night. And then if we play a Tuesday game, now you're looking, 'cause that's your meat potato nights are Tuesday and Wednesday. Now you're really messing up your varsity day, so that's the biggest problem I see. I don't see any problem with co-op and I don't have any problem co-op, but if it's gonna affect the varsity sport, I do have, that's where I see the problem. It's in the varsity sport, not the junior high.
My question about that is how would it be any different if we had these teams together, people's kids are still...
Yeah, I don't know, it would, you would have, you're gonna have at least thirty players between the two. If you, if you bring in eleven, what do you think, what do we have next year, do you think, junior high was? Yeah, at least twenty, so you're looking, there's thirty-one. And if you played an A and a B schedule, I guess the old, the old way you used to do it, you'd play an A game and then they'd play a part of a B game. After that, the same location, so you didn't have to, you know, have two different trap and...
But with the schedule that we've got, that's not gonna work, 'cause none of those teams are gonna have a B team.
Yeah, I know, that's exactly right.
Or you're gonna have to reschedule out to a C1 school.
That's exactly right. The chances of them having a B team is gonna be slim.
But by putting ours together, we're also going to have more coaches.
Right. We will. You guys still just have it too.
Well, but I mean, thinking junior high, we would still have, we could, you know, one of your coaches and one of ours can go with the junior high, our schedule, and then same for your schedule. So it would only, you know, be a difference though, because we'd have extra coaches. Because they're gonna add coaches to the...
Yeah, two here and two there, it doesn't matter what age you're adding or minus.
Right, but I mean, what I'm saying is that we're saying, two games a week, still, our coaches are gonna be gone the same number of games that they would anyway, like you were saying.
That was just a way we could do it this way. One of the things, I hadn't thought of it before, as you were talking, Jean, as a varsity coach in a high school, you do have to be more careful now with the rules on the contact and that too and setting up the practices. So playing on a Monday night is gonna pose a different situation than playing on a Tuesday night because of what you can do because of what kids you have involved in different drills too. Like I said, I hadn't thought about that.
Hell, you have a contact period now that they, which is followed.
Do you guys see the high school, ever co-op in there between Creighton and... Because I guess my, my point of where, of the junior high or what I was high school, if, you know, if we're gonna have a junior high system come together, it has to be a long range thing. Sooner or later, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a high school thing. Why would we co-op junior high for a system that we're never gonna play them in the same team at high school?
I kinda look at it, we're in a position where we need some help, we're gonna need that help as we go through high school too. You guys are in a position where you don't need it right now, but in the future, you're gonna need help at the junior high level and at the high school level. And I haven't had no problem with co-op everything in the future. And I just vote on whatever you... But it'd be nice if you could have all those teams have A, B, and C team and be able to have them get a chance to compete at a, at a freshman level. So I'm usually at a high school level, for boys, girls.
I like the idea of if you're closer, you know, we probably don't want C1. And I like the idea of your C1 together versus two teams struggling at eight man or D1 or D2. At C1, you can field football, you can, you got cross-country guys, you got golf people, and you've got, you know, wrestling people, you got, you can fill all that. You know, or we're both separate, well, then you're sitting here with a few here, a few there, this year we're good, next year we're gonna be bad. But if you have that C1 level, you've got kids every year. You know, yeah, you might be up and down a little bit, but you still got enough to keep going.
I know there was some concern expressed, if you change size, you know, then you're traveling at this, this finding of the team.
C1 won't be that bad, there's a lot of C1s.
I'm just voicing that some of the opinions of that.
But you can play C2 schools, you know, it's just when you get a lot of man, eight man, that you have trouble. But, you know, you, a C1 can play C2 in other sports.
I, I know Randy was sharing numbers with what Creighton had. I think it's our third and fourth grade that has small numbers and in junior high is where, once again, that's where our new is going to be. But on each side of those small numbers, we have large classes, so you put them into high school and we have, you know, we don't have a small group when you put four grades together at high school. So that was another thing why, you know, co-op, I started in junior high and continued on when we really don't need it when we get to high school. It's just when there's only two grades.
Those two grades, so third, third and fourth grade would still be somewhere around fourteen to sixteen kids. And you could still play field football. That's, that's crazy, that's crazy, it's thirty-fourth grades. Those bad grades that everybody's talking about, we'd still have enough number probably to field the team.
If they play, yeah.
Yeah, you could do a good job with that.
Another concern that came up was the fact that here we're able to have our practice during eighth period because we have a seventh period feeding in athletics. And I think that's kind of important to parents, so that practice is over with and they can go home on the bus if they need to. And you're not set up that way, I'm understanding, right?
We are now.
We're set up that way.
Oh, you are now?
Mm-hmm.
So they're done at the end of the school day with practice?
Junior high school.
Okay, when did they, that concern came because if we were traveling over there, they wouldn't be back in town.
Right, if you're traveling.
You wouldn't be, you wouldn't be on the street.
And we have, you know, our seventh grade, our junior high does have classes in the seventh grade.
So you have to...
And we would have a problem.
Right, see, that's, that's what I was getting at, yeah.
We're not gonna cut that class short.
Are you still blocking blocks, you gotta do our...
No, we're on E4. Close, the chances of having, I mean, everybody just move together, get out through the buses, available to ride the buses home, fucking, you still have time to practice.
That was an issue, I mean, coming from the parents.
An Elgin issue, concern.
Is your schedule set for next year?
It depends here.
Okay, so there's a possibility that there could be, like, their PE class, which they have, I'm sure, back-to-back with their athletic period?
They do, we do both of those eighth period. We send our kids to practice and then our PE, the kids that don't participate, they get PE and help. And the other kids who get PE and help during the sports season. And they do everything together when they're not playing season.
So there's no chance that there would be travel time, so that the kids could leave early enough seventh period to have a fifty-minute practice and get back?
Take all four periods.
That probably would not be the season, we'd be down to sixth period a day.
With the parents that showed up at our meeting Monday night, we had talked about extending practice after school, so they would get back a little later. You know, they made practice to the end of school day and then there would be the travel time. And it would be up to the parents to make sure they got home from Plainview and we'd get back to Plainview. But then it'd be up to them to get home at that point, and they seemed to be all right with that. And some schools have their whole practice after school in junior high.
If you got the coaches at that, we're, the numbers on the coaches, but we didn't, you know, last year, we had three coaches and two of them, two of them coached three sport, three levels. That's just what we have.
In football, we don't have any more assistant kind of...
We don't have anybody in our junior high that coaches at this point. They're all separate.
We're lucky to be out.
Yeah, you are.
It's very, very hard to go along.
It's hard to get people to coach you, you know, they just don't wanna do it.
I'm sure just young and crazy.
But if you can get them to be separated, it saves the wear and tear of the ones you have and they'll last a little longer, then they can do it all for free. There's some coaches like that too, because then they can bring kids up the way that they wanna do it.
And we do have open, openings, so we don't know. Again, depending on what happens here tonight, Mr. Fredrick and I will be sitting down tomorrow trying to fill ourselves with thought because we do have a couple people leaving which sent for sports, so we might be doing a, and we don't have a choice.
But you do have like a, a class in the eighth period?
Yes.
Just like, well, kinda similar timeline like what we have here?
Yep, yeah.
And that's for all, is that it for all sports then?
Yes.
Your basketball does the same thing and...
Wrestling and...
Wrestling and all that. I think our, so our school day is the same thing.
It's pretty close because we do distance learning at that, it's pretty, pretty close. What kind of... Our school day's longer. We get out at maybe thirty, or maybe eighteen, that's longer.
And I know something that would be an issue with some of our parents is, you know, just for the idea of say if you were splitting everybody up and making two teams. I mean, there was a little concern that I got from some people about how that would, how that would work out, you know? You know, okay, who do you determine who goes where, you know? It's just, that would, could create some...
You got, you got, you know, a man taking kids over to Plainview and a man from Plainview taking kids to Creighton. And then they're playing Creighton's schedule and they're playing Plainview's schedule.
But you know, we don't have to do that for one year. After the first year, you can change your whole schedule and play bigger schools that have two teams. That would only have to happen the first year to save our schedules to get into next year. Otherwise, you wouldn't have to do it that way.
If you're still doing it one year, then...
Yeah.
And so, and then it's, you know, what do those kids think of that, plus their parents think of that.
Also...
Size, not only Creighton people, but Plainview people.
Another thing you could have, and I don't know what it would do, is you could have a family that has two kids in junior high, seventh grader and eighth grader. I mean, put them on two different teams, you know, and have to make sure they're on the same team.
You could, you could make sure that they're on the same team, so that doesn't matter. How many junior high football do you guys play games?
We play six games junior high, six of JV, I think, or...
You can play six.
Play six.
We play six.
That'd be the other thing you'd have to be careful of, but how do they can screw that up if you're trying to fill in the whole schedules? Probably gonna count that if you're weighing in make games.
But we'd lose each other, 'cause that's one of our games and one of your games, I assume. So that'd be two games, that would be, or one game, like, so...
Some of the, did we complete all of our JV games last year? I know some of the JV games, or junior high games? Because some of the, some people canceled because of numbers.
I think we were one of them.
Okay, 'cause I, we had, and then a JV game was also canceled because of numbers, I think. Elgin, was it Elgin?
Oral.
JV. No, so I mean, if you have six games, you're not guaranteed six games, depend on what the numbers are for that particular year.
You might find it pretty easy to find a team, if you just wanted to drop them just because they don't know they're gonna...
Right, right.
Yeah, to me, the toughest thing about doing it next year is the coach and getting the coaching set up so that they didn't have to go both nights and both games. You would need four coaches, almost, two from each school. And some of that could possibly be a parent or somebody that wanted to, to help for a year, you know, just so you had a second person at the game. So they wouldn't have to do that much of practice, your two maintenance could do the practices, but if you just had a second person that kinda knew what was going on, gave them some of the practice, to go along to the game, so you had a second person there. Just for one year.
How did, how did find those people?
Yeah, I know it is.
There are a lot of people, there's people that would like to do it, but just...
It would just be something that we could, you know, work seriously on so that it, you know, gets them playing next year or, you know, for the following year and that we are C1 and get that all arranged, you know, instead of, you know, since it is so late in the year, this, you know, right now, get everything all changed, organize coaches and all that stuff that we would have, you know, a few months that we could really make sure we get it all organized so that for the following year, it's ready to go. I mean, is that something...
But it also goes back to, if you're not planning on doing eleven man at high school, do you wanna be eleven man junior high? Or do you wanna have two eight man teams?
It's, it's still blocking and tackling, I mean, there is some, it's probably more of a strategy thing than it is playing thing, but... But now like when you have, you have eleven, you say eleven, and is that with the numbers? Is there, is there a lot that's not, quite a few that's not playing that's in this group, in this junior high class where you can't draw from any other numbers then? You're getting a good participation level and...
Those are just our small classes.
Just small classes.
Toys that aren't playing.
And so you got, you do have eleven though. 'Cause I think last, the first time we talked, I think you had seven when you first time.
That was basketball. That was basketball.
Oh, okay, maybe I misunderstood.
I think that's she from the car, but I think we have eleven football.
Okay.
Today.
And that's if nobody gets hurt. And we had that number last year too, and, you know, we had kids that become ineligible because they don't take you serious and say, make your work done. And then we had two kids get hurt, and so at the end of the season, we had to cancel. I know Mr. Fredrick's here, some of us saw it. It's very, very hard.
We canceled our game with Creighton, and then we canceled one.
Or just junior high football.
I must not be processing something right, because you have two junior high football coaches and we have two junior high football coaches. So how would the coaching situation change if two coaches went to, say, your schedule of games and two coaches went to our schedule of games? What am I missing?
You don't have junior high, you don't have junior high coaches that coach varsity, right? That's what you're missing.
Right, but see, our coaches would still only have to go to four game, or our junior high games, just like they do now. Even though they're helping with the JV and varsity. That's not gonna change it.
But sure is, what I think what they're saying to see is your assistant varsity coaches wouldn't be with, they'd be gone, one of them would be gone one night and the other one would be gone the other night when they're having varsity practice.
Assuming that they all in place on the same night. If they are, then Monday.
And that Monday, and it's nice if it is Monday.
Then they can't go out. If they have one of the Creighton coaches that are available and they had two Plainview, still work on somehow, I would assume. Somebody'd have to go on themselves.
Or couldn't two Plainview coaches go with, Plainview scheduled games and our two go with Creighton's?
Certainly, but who can varsity practice then? Which is the same as it's them.
It's just like it is now, it doesn't change that.
So do you both do practice too then?
We do our junior high practice and then we end up doing the taping and everything for our high school practice.
See, that would be a, a help too, because if we'd send a coach up, you guys don't have to furnish work for practices for junior high, you wouldn't both have to either. Well, we'd have to furnish it through your high coach.
My, my big thing is travel time doing just preparation for the high school practice, 'cause I have to do a lot of stuff. I had from the time until rings of three thirty to three fifty, I'm doing stuff constantly. And there, most of the time, they're already running and stretching, by that time, I even get out to the, out to the fielders. So if our travel time is me getting back at three fifty, three fifty-five, if we'd happen to be in Plainview for that week, you know, I'd, I'd lose varsity. But the high school is more what I'm concerned about, the high school of course, 'cause people aren't going to state junior high to do our things in high school.
Well, we should, some of these things, then you work out, I guess we have to decide whether we wanna do it next year. If you don't wanna do it next year, then we can set it up in your attitude.
Or do you like the idea too, like what you said about, about, you know, if we're gonna co-op, I'd like to co-op, you know, everything, girls and the boys, you know, let's do everything.
I will co-op.
Yes, exactly.
Look, we're gonna do that, not gonna start this year.
Yeah, we need, there's too many questions gone here and here in logistics. We could sit here easily and say, oh, we'll just take this guy and come... There's a lot more logistics in the background that we know, those, you know, in these sports, that it isn't that simple. And if we take the time and we got this stuff worked out, I'm on board, not to jump in and figure it out. I'm not over there.
Well, some of that stuff, it's not...
The morgue's job, or the logistics, that's the administrative's job. The more it's job, or the logistics, that's the administrative's job. Our, our decision is, oh, we're gonna do it next year, oh, we're gonna wait.
There you go.
And so if we decide we don't wanna do it, then let's plan ahead for the next year.
Yes, exactly.
If we did that, let's also look at maybe if we did the junior high and then the year after that, I mean, not next year, but the year after that, would we be interested in co-opping in the varsity after that?
Right.
And if we were, then that would give us time to get it set up, um, for when the two-year football thing comes around.
Yeah, 'cause we got two-year, this is our first year of the two-year contract this year.
If we wanted, wait, wait, and then do it this year, then do it next year. And then we have the junior high together and then we can talk about co-opping everything.
Right.
After that, we, that would be a good time for us to set that up, I mean, be going into the first year of football with a year under our belt, co-opping junior.
The best thing, the smartest thing to do between the two communities is put an athletic facility right out here between the two communities. That'll take care of a heck of a lot of headaches and a lot of problems. Because then, then Plainview's not gonna complain about going to Creighton games and vice versa, and that's, that's the smartest thing to do.
Do you have a head left trying to get it done though? From the opposition.
You never know, but it is the smartest thing to do.
Yeah, 'cause that's where your issues come up.
That's where, yeah, that's where the real issues are.
Yeah, but if you can't get it done for academics, isn't it right to go for sports?
I was gonna say, I don't wanna.
And I agree, it, it seems like activities is a tail of the white's a dog, you know, that, that's what comes up more times in college. And I agree with you, I mean, yeah, we're here for academics, but activities is really a big part of school too.
Part of academics. It's part of the educational.
But.
Part of what you get in school, you learn just as much in athletics as you do in the classroom.
There's, yeah, there's, there's a lot of advantages to both. But the coaches.
I'm the counselor at Vertre, so my, at our principal this morning, give me some highlights as far as how he feels that it's working with NiBRA and Vertre co-opping, and so if you're ever interested, you can look up on my list or whatever. But his first comment was that it's been an awesome deal for both schools.
Well, there again, it goes back to where we're trying to provide opportunity for kids, you know, that's, that's the bottom line.
And transportation is the biggest, um, he gave me a, this is for, uh, let's see, I guess it's for two weeks, but he's responsible, the principal is responsible for setting up the transportation, and so this is one week of vans going here and there and here and there. And, uh, it could be done, but like I, I, I used, I worked here, you probably knew that, so I always thought when we were here, we could use just one more van. Well, guess what I hear over there, we could use just one more van, you know, it's just a matter of making it work. But that, that's the biggest challenge that is, is working out that schedule.
If it doesn't work this year, what are you gonna do, what are, what are you guys gonna do then? What'd you end up doing with those eleven kids? Trying to do what you did this year then?
That would be, that would have been last year.
That's what the years and hope that we can get through this season.
Going through the same thing they did this last year.
Yeah, it is vertical, probably the best chance for me.
We could maybe even, not that we want to, but stand team six man. You could play a couple, maybe play them twice, who knows what their schedule is though, if they wanna pick up an extra game, I don't know. There's not many six-man schools around here, so.
Valley, I think.
Uh, went back.
Oh, and the fact that.
I think they're going to high school. They go ahead and do another man.
Lawson didn't drop down yet, right? They talked about, or they were.
Yeah, they talked about that.
So you would rather just hope than come over here and play without setting up something kind of? Is that the, is that what I'm hearing?
It's kinda what we, I think we heard from the parents probably, you know. But really look to the parents, what they wanna do is.
Well, I think the parents wanted the, and it's getting late this year, but they wanted the true co-op, you know, where we're all sharing everything, well, your kids don't have advantage over our kids, vice versa. Yeah. Let's face it, everybody worries about stuff like that, parents do, kids do. And if it's too late this year, maybe we can look for the following year, you know, take our licks this year, do what we can do and, and look forwards to the following year, you know? But then there's been discussion if we're gonna do that, just like you said, maybe on the high school level, now we've got all these kids, is it really necessary? Let's say if we do it at the high school, do, do you wanna play, okay, thirty-some kids for junior high football, not this year, but next year?
Yeah, it's the same problem, isn't it?
Should we be looking at maybe, uh, yeah, now we co-op those kids for one year, now we go into high school, and now we've got seventeen out for high school football. You know, and that's where we're gonna be facing in the next few years, I think. We're gonna be short, then again, our numbers spike back up in our little classes and it'd be fine. I think from what I've seen on your numbers, you're kinda go down, or then maybe you could use the help, so I think in the long term, we probably need to be looking at a true co-op. Maybe start at junior high for a year or two, like Bob said, the class of fifteen in two years would be the time to maybe really look hard at doing everything and move up a class, I don't know what he put us, I haven't combined the numbers and I'm not sure what the cutoffs are on that, but, uh.
You know, I've got the numbers. You know, and I agree with there's no case, you know.
C one.
We have the numbers.
Middle road C one.
C one.
C one through twenty-six.
No, exactly, exactly.
So, we got, you know, and of course winning program brings them out, we've seen that at Creighton too, both ways. You know, but just because we're gonna combine the numbers doesn't mean we're gonna.
Yeah, doesn't, yeah, classification will be what it is, you know.
Yeah, if you only get half of them, you're, you're fooled.
Well, and they have the option to do different things, if they felt obligated at one time, you know, or do something else, if they thought there was enough people to fill the team. But I guess that's kinda what I'm, what I'm feeling, is kinda the way we're leaning, is maybe not being able to do something this year, but kinda get our ducks in a row for, so we'd be ready for a different classification when that grade comes in two years.
But we'd be looking at junior high in seventh and eighth.
Right.
Next year.
Right.
You know.
Two, seventeen.
Seventeen.
Two years from now.
Junior high or?
Could this be junior high?
Junior.
The next year. The next year. Keep it open.
You have to go next year, wait for three years.
Absolutely.
Right. If you did it, if you get everything together and your ducks in a row, then you just decide. You're in the beginning of the two year. You have to meld all that stuff before sense, and then.
Well, yeah, the number's going the last Friday of the.
You're talking our high school.
Right. I will say that I don't think, as much as people say kids don't get along, social media has made that. You know, I had the other day, I was telling Mr. Allman, probably a couple other people, I came home and I didn't even know who was at my house, and I said, John, you know, who was that? And it was some Creighton kids, they called in pizza at Casey's, and they picked up two of the Plainview kids and they were driving around happy eating pizza. I mean, they do get along, I don't know that that's an issue. Might be a little bit different if there's a little bit of competition, but I'm also in favor of a little bit of competition, I don't think.
I already play baseball with him.
That, well, on that self entitlement that kids think they have right now, I don't have to do this because I'm also gonna make the team regardless of what I do. I think that's part of what we're seeing.
I think that's probably the least fear I have is the kids getting along.
Yeah, but I, I think it's a fear of other people.
Yeah, well, and, and a lot of it, just it's gotta be worked out, but this just doesn't come together in a short amount of time.
Right.
Time to train. But I, I am definitely open to, you know, future talks and even taking this on to possibly the high school.
I know there's parents out there that don't agree with this, but to me it's more important to have good competition in practice than it is for every kid to get a play or start every game, you know? It makes a better team to have competition in practice. If you just get a start because you're out, it doesn't make for good, good teams. I know some parents don't like that, but.
Junior high, everybody should see.
I, I didn't say you don't get a play, I say you don't get a start. You know, yeah, I agree, everybody, everybody needs a good play in junior high.
Varsity.
That's all over the board.
That'd be. No book of numbers in high school, at least those kids are able to participate in a JV game where a lot of the JV games, the numbers abound in schools, they're canceling them. So if they're not getting enough to play varsity, they're not playing much football.
And you can go back to them freshman games, you know, you got kids in freshman, that you can have a freshman game, that's freshmen and not the same juniors and sophomores that have been playing.
We talked about that, and you even see that in basketball, where they don't have enough to play the full junior, junior varsity game, they can only play two quarters 'cause the kids gotta play varsity. I mean, and when we, when we do this, you would, you know, Plainview, possibly, we still got, like you say, the, the towns that aren't willing to do it, and there you go, you go play two quarters of basketball.
But if you were playing.
Well, we try.
C one would be playing.
Right.
If you go C one, you'll play. We're gonna have. And that's cool. That'd be really nice. O'Neal, Patrick, Murphy, Patrick.
But that's the thing with.
I don't see.
I don't know, what the first would be too.
So, if this is something that we're thinking about doing, you know, I, I agree, getting our ducks in a row. But then let's not not talk, let's get the ball rolling, let's get things figured out, because a year doesn't take long to go by.
No.
And if that's truly how we wanna do it, then, I, I just don't want there to be, you know, no communication, stop, you know, stops and just keep things moving forward.
Eight more months. But I, but I agree with Mr. Gray here, Bob, that Harvey says it is what we're gonna do. It's up to the coaches, the athletic directors, the superintendents to bring us a plan to approve. It's not for us, the school board members, here to figure out how this is gonna work. But yeah, keep, keep communicating and move forward.
Sure, we've been working, well, we talked to you guys before the five school thing, we knew these two classes were coming up, that's why we started clear back then, and so by the time we got to next year, we had something figured out with somebody. Well, here we are, next year's right around the corner, and we're still sitting here, no further along than we were three years ago when this all started.
Hard to dance when maybe we want to dance.
Well, let's, if, if that's what we wanna do, let's set a time on when we're gonna decide that we wanna do this, in two thousand seventeen.
Well, I guess we're kinda in, we sent out the survey, so we can't be making the decision before the survey comes back. I gotta tell you, as far as the survey, depending on how many of them come back, it's just an instrument. It's not gonna be my final, this is the way, this is the parents have talked, now they're, depending on how, if we get a hundred percent back and it's over fifty percent, I'll go with that. But I, I just use that as an instrument for all the rest of this debate we've had and, and this communication that I'm not gonna let twenty percent come in on the survey and that's the way we're going. Me, we got old board, you know.
Very new superintendent. So, um, he comes in from July. So, um, you need to have your survey, you need to digest that, so could we make a decision maybe in August?
How would we do?
Could we make a decision in August, then our A Ds and all the people that are doing the work have time to go through these things? The administrators have time, set everything up.
Can I ask a question?
We just make it come in.
Yes. Would, and I'm not trying to delay you, but would it be more valuable to have those plans put in place before you made a decision? To have the administrators maybe talk, come up with some of those logistics? So then you maybe have answer for your public and our public, if you can come back with an answer of this is why I support this, or this is why I don't support it. Um, you know, like, to me, it makes sense to have some of those rungs of the ladder put in there instead of just decides, you know, put some of the steps there. That's just a.
Because, yeah, I, I, I agree totally, but, and we've had, we've had one meeting with the superintendent, the athletic directors, and a couple, I don't know, a couple meetings, but. But that one meeting is not gonna figure out, okay, we've got it all figured out now, you know? There's gonna be a number of meetings and, and like you're saying, how many of that's gonna take, I, we can put a time, you gotta put a timeline on everything, but I don't wanna put it to that. Okay, but, I mean, we said August, let's make a decision, because if we got the information or we feel comfortable with at least, it's never gonna be a perfect plan, we all know that. We gotta, we gotta make a decision and go and then tweak it as we go forward, but, but the thing is, is we, it's just not something we wanna jump into about. At least have, you know, seventy-five percent of it figured out. I just picked that one last.
But then, if you consider that, I mean, you decide that you wanna come with us, the administrator can start working on it right away. But we would, I would say that I would wanna have a commitment in August that we can do it in the next year, so that when they make these.
What do you say, what do you say it on the next year, I guess?
Seventeen?
Sev- for seventeen, not this fall, but next fall.
I'm saying that we're.
Co-op in junior high, all junior high.
Okay.
In seventeen eighteen.
And that's a full co-op then, so then we're going both places and that ends all that, okay.
Right, junior high. For junior high. And I'm talking about eighteen, nineteen, studying.
Feel hard on me.
On co-opping everything in junior two, okay? All sports, junior high, high school. We're not gonna make a commitment on that in August. We're gonna make the commitment to do the junior high the next year, and then I would say the next year, at the same time, we need to make a commitment on.
It's really, you only got, what, a year and a half till you have to commit to the N S A, so.
Right. And again, you need, you need to have enough done, enough time for people to do it, A Ds.
I think we need to have a meeting between now and the next time we all meet.
Sure.
With our public, just like you guys in your seat. And I think we need to keep meeting every so often, and the people that are gonna organize this will bring that information that they have so far, and we have an open meeting that the people can come to and we'll talk about every two or three months, whatever, so that information gets out there to everybody, what we're doing. And it's our time to change it if we think we need to change something.
Well, I, I agree with that, but at the same time, we got regular board meetings too, we can put ten, fifteen minutes in the board meeting if you'd be, uh, you know, every time we're having another meeting and another meeting, I get, yeah.
He loves meetings.
But, you know, we can put that on our regular agenda for a ten or fifteen minute ladder, because basically, ten or fifteen minutes, we hear what they want to say.
Yeah, we don't have to get together as a full board, we can use it in our meeting, as long as we both bring the same information.
Do whatever, but I guess with Creighton, I, I, we put it on the agenda and keep it open that way, and give them an opportunity, the parents an opportunity to come in. But, uh, I think, I felt, I feel we, we, we went the whole route, so.
And then we make a decision and go.
And, and that's what our administration and A D have hired to do, I mean, they're the ones that know the ins and outs of what, that's supposed to make it work, so, you know.
But I think we need to keep the public informed as we go and not just, when it's all decided, we bring, okay, that's the way it's gonna be, you know, we got it all decided.
Well, but that's what I mean, they can work on it and bring it to our board, and those, and like Tim says, you know, have meetings and say, this is what things are looking like, and and I, I, I think we could probably put a timeline in there like Bob was saying for, for August and.
Well, just say that they're communicating together, let's say by the August school board meeting, we'll go on whether we wanna go on or not. And assuming that all these other things happen the way we want, if you're serving, if it's the way you want, if we have our public meetings and have those things happen. I don't think we need to get together until we decide to do that, and then we just start working on it.
And it's more than that, we need to know what our public wants, because we're representing our public, you know.
Right.
And having a deadline to give the public will help too, I don't know, it's, it's now, you know, that's what's gonna happen.
All these school board meetings. I know we can go the next year and do the same thing.
And a suggestion that Mr. Kutter had was to meet at least three, but even better, four times a year, both boards. And to remind everybody to be open, very open, about the things that are bothering or, you know, the good sides of it too, but it just has to be that way.
You suggested that putting it together or even after your co-op, you're still basically.
After, afterward.
I think both boards have to be very transparent, hey, we're not liking this, our parents aren't liking this, what are yours saying?
Yes.
Probably they're saying the same thing, well, what can we do to make it better?
Right.
The reason I asked about. The reason I asked about putting the steps in there, like the administrators and A Ds, is as, as you mentioned earlier, Dan, uh, one of the big things our parents had was our kids getting back for the buses. So those are things that meant, I think, like you said, probably that, that administrators probably need to take care of. I think those steps probably need to be taken to justify what your decision would be in August, or if that's September, whatever, that, yes, that would be my personal thought.
I was just getting, so maybe, you know, you're, Bob mentioned, well, seventh period, and we're not gonna miss seventh period. And I don't blame you, I don't think, I don't think your parents would want kids skipping out of a, a seventh period, fifteen minutes to take the travel over there. So that's gonna be the first hurdle, one of the first hurdles that, not we, but, you know, you guys are gonna have to figure out. But at the same time, we gotta work together on that to get these, get these schedules in line, that we'll be able to make this logistic work, or we're, we're, we're just setting ourselves up. Failure from the very start, first step.
That's part of the result we want to make.
Do your junior high kids have a set schedule during the day?
You guys don't have your own transportation either, right?
We have vans.
Oh, you got vans, but.
And I was gonna leave it, you know, not that I'm feeling one way or the other, but being physically responsible, I'm, I'm looking at, you know, Plainview has five kids that could get on a van and come over here. Where if we're gonna try to put twenty kids on a van, the cost, you know, I, I'm thinking common sense, common sense tells me, let's keep the cost down. Cause Creighton's gonna be in that same situation here in a few years, we're gonna have five kids, let's put them on our vans and take them over there. You know, rather than, you know, rather than get into the difficulty of it all, let's just common sense right now, in that if you have five kids that wanna play, bring your five kids over. We have five kids that wanna play, we'll bring our five kids over.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna get into that.
You know, I guess, I, I guess I'm thinking.
I say physically, it might be important, but that's not a co-op, so. Because now you're, now we're in a situation, whoever has the most kids gets to have everything at their school, let's find one, we have the most kids, we have the most kids, it's gonna be the same way. No, we're gonna co-op.
I'm gonna tell you right now that that's a problem, that Elgin, not Elgin, sorry, Orchard Clearwater are having, they had, they had good intentions from the start.
Mm-hmm.
And then it just all got ugly, so.
But I'm just, I'm speaking purely junior high, because, you know, at this time, what I'm hearing from both communities is neither community is really in favor of a total co-op.
Do you think it's a total co-op or not? Yeah.
You know, I, that's my gut feeling, I'm speaking for myself, I guess, but that's what I'm hearing from, from the public, and until we're ready for a complete co-op. You know, I guess I can't see spending more money than.
I think ours is just the opposite.
Yeah, I'm sure too.
It might come down to where they'd have to, you know, by looking at time scheduling and vans and going back and forth, uh, they might have to shorten practices a little bit. And they, you know, you might, you might lose ten minutes, you know, and that may, well, that's real valuable, but it's also giving you an opportunity to compete that way too. Still make things work on the other end, getting coaches back to coach the next level, stuff like that.
Sure.
Even though I'm sure the coaches don't have that idea, but. Might be a decision.
We have to reflect.
There will be changes made after we start, I mean, it's not gonna be made right from the get-go.
Patty has been through this, when she was a high.
Thanks for laughing at that one.
She has a lot, she has all the answers.
No, I bet she doesn't.
She has loved straight support.
But, but we can learn, like you did, you guys just brought up the Clearwater Orchard, we can learn a lot, like from there. Uh, I think we're in a unification and I, I don't know what they're doing, but, you know, once again, they, they started out in the system, and I thought they were going along pretty good and they're competing. And now all of a sudden, something went, went awry and, and they're breaking off. All that, all that time spent, you know, towards that, and they can't. So I just say, the research up front and the logistics up front, let's get it right. And I'm not saying, no, we gotta get a perfect plan for here, we at least gotta get it a lot better than what we have right now, from the questions I'm hearing and concerns, issues from, from people. I, I think, I'm sure it's on your side too, because actually, we had one of your parents at that, at that meeting, so they weren't all on board with it. They just seemed to stay and play their football.
They wanted our kids that weren't gonna play here to go to Plainview.
But that's just one person.
Still the team, that's what she, that's what she wanted.
If they're not playing here, why would they wanna play over there?
Then they, cause that'll fuel the team.
They'd get out of school a lot of the travel thing.
That's who we were dealing with.
That's who we're dealing with.
I, I agree, we, we need to learn from our neighbors, but at the same time, I, I'm not in agreement of jumping into something so that we end up like our neighbors. That's why I said, make this a slow go, and you know, and if it's just, let's play in our backyard for a while, and, and then your backyard for a while, if that's what it takes. To eventually get to a point of, okay, now we can think about dating a little bit, and then maybe after the dating period works out, then the total co-op will work. But you know, it may take to play in your backyard and our backyard for a while, just to get people okay with it.
Yeah, we've been trying to do this for three years, I know, cause I've been on the board. You know, if, if you guys, we're gonna go slow with this, and it's gonna take three more years to do it, we're not gonna need it anymore.
Yeah, right.
And so, when you guys need it, and you're not gonna, you know how it's gonna go, you're gonna co-op and use it to help each other out. But if we're gonna go slow, and we're gonna make three years before we can get into this, let's not even discuss it.
You know, the thing is too, that if you, like you say, you got five players down the road, say you got, you know, we got five now, you got seven. Okay, what's that number that says, okay, you know, I got seven, you gotta come, is it, is it five, is it seven? Cause if we come here with five, our people, when you get to seven, are gonna say, well, why don't they come down here, you know, and your people say, well, we don't want it, we got seven, we don't, what do you think? What's that cutoff, you know, you better have that cut and dry, or it's gonna be an argument, and that's how you're gonna end up like varsity.
I agree with you, but if you look at the numbers, you know, these are the years when you don't have enough to fill your junior high teams. We're going to have those numbers that aren't going to fill the junior high team, and you're going to have the numbers to fill the junior high team at that time. So that's, I guess, what I'm thinking about.
But the issue we run into is if we are actually serious about doing a full high school co-op, so they're prepared for the eighteen, nineteen year. We have to be moving it forward with our junior high by seventeen, eighteen, because otherwise, then we run out of time.
I, I agree with you, but we have to first note, are they wanting to do that in high school? If they're not wanting to do it at high school, you know, then we just have to work with what happens in junior high.
Well, that, if we're able to do it in junior high, that would be a big unification of what we can do next year.
But like, is it junior high is only two years, high school is four years?
Eventually, it becomes not a big deal. I mean, my daughter did it when she was a senior in high school, it was not a big deal.
I, I'm not saying it's a big deal.
And when they do it in junior high, junior high don't even know where they are most of the time, so, you know, they, they're just happy, life is good, they, you know.
They're not in class, they're happy.
I mean, junior high are just in their own world, so they don't even, they don't really even get it, they just think they're going to meet new friends and, and move on. And I know there are people that will argue with me on that one, but watch them in, in a, in a hallway, new people that teach them, they're the greatest kids to teach, because they have such a great spirit. And they love school, not necessarily class, they just love being here because all their friends are here, and they get to be involved in things, and life is good, they have nothing to worry about. Except are they gonna get a car, and are they gonna pass driver's ed? That's our biggest concern right now, are we gonna pass driver's ed so we can get a car? I mean, junior high is totally different than high school, but then those kids will have moved on with each other, and that kind of lessens the burden in high school. In all honesty, I think we have several kids in our school right now that would step right in and be perfectly okay with it, and it wouldn't bother them.
I don't think kids are gonna be a problem.
Nope. If they start, if they start playing and working together in junior high, then they're gonna just wanna grow and play with those same teammates. And look at school too, it's just gonna progress, so, yeah.
But you've talked to your coaches over there, and you got them involved in all this too, right? I mean, cause I think that's important, that you get your coaches involved and get input from the coaches, because they're the ones that are gonna have to live with this as much as the kids are. The parents take, doing the things that they do, so, you know, that, that's something we need to address.
I guess when, and even when all this started, I mean, we, we thought, and I think the thing was, well, we started at junior high and see how it goes, you know, this co-op business. But if we don't, and in my mind, if we don't have a, as much of a commitment to say, maybe not a commitment, but as much of a, a vision to say that the high schools are gonna also co-op. I go back to, let's just let the junior high figure out where they're gonna play, and then we'll play, you know, co-, you know, uh, high school football. Until we get to the numbers where we can't do that any longer, and we gotta co-op, now we just co-op, you know what I mean? If we don't have that long vision, that these two high schools aren't ever gonna co-op, I don't know why we wanna go through the pains of junior high. So, I mean.
And, and that's exactly what I was trying to say, maybe I was not saying it correctly, but.
Doesn't mean I said it.
But what I, what I was trying to say though is, the, the, I don't wanna be unfair to this group of kids, that if there is only five and they can't fill. You know, if, if that's my son, I'd be happy to bring him over to Plainview, let him get an opportunity to play, even if that's not going to be a co-op in high school. But eventually, because we've worked together, that down the road, that co-op will happen. I mean, like you said, you have to have a vision, but that vision doesn't have to be tomorrow. That vision could be ten, ten years down the road before both of our schools are too small to, but we need to take care of the immediate small group.
So do you have two coaches, because that's all that you have, you have a coach, or do you have two coaches, cause that's all you'll hire?
Basically, well, that's, that's all we have, that's paid.
Oh, yeah, that's all you, uh, go.
That's paid.
I enjoy all.
Well.
Nobody else, nobody else work with these guys?
Jeff did, Jeff did. No, I tried, I, I tweaked the bush for coaches last year to get a coach, couldn't do it, and doing it right now. But, uh, no way, two, two, and thank God they stayed, you know, we'd have been in trouble if, if, if one of them would've left, cause that's, you're looking at this, you're looking at the football staff right here, that's all we have.
That's what I figured, but it's scary.
And that's why, you know, people say, I think, I've said it a number of times, Randy, Randy always says, well, what else we gonna do? I said, geez, those guys, I said, they're, you know, they're coaching junior high, then they come out here and they're doing varsity, and then they go to a junior high game and a, and a JV game, and they're, I said, you're burning them out. Well, what else do we do? You're right, I don't know.
I just figured they wanted all the money.
But I think like, guys like that, those are, that's, their input's important. You know, they're gonna give us more input than board members that aren't dealing with it on a daily basis, or even public, people in the public and community.
And you don't.
Well, that's why I feel like you gotta involve, not only the A D, but you also have to involve your coaches. And sometimes it doesn't hurt to involve the faculty a little bit either, also because you know how that stuff goes too.
Those, those are people that have to get it done.
Yeah.
So really, you guys would be better shape if we did, coaching wise, as far as numbers, if we were co-op in the, the high school.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we could bring a couple more over here.
You know, it would depend, I think a lot of it depends on, like, the numbers, because, you know, when I was at Board Nebraska when I first, well, my first head job I took was in Board Nebraska. We were, we, uh, we had a freshman team, and then also, so we had a freshman coach, and then we had, uh, two varsity assistants and myself. And then played JV games on Monday night, the same thing, kind of very similar to the way it is here. But they'll, they still, the freshmen got to play on a separate team, and I think our freshman, freshman team was roughly thirteen to fifteen kids every year, would be thirteen to fifteen freshmen. Not saying they're all thirteen, all those kids are coming out the next year to play or not, but at least they played that freshman year, cause they, and we had, they had actually a board policy that freshmen could not play varsity. That was their board policy at that time, so, so it was totally separate. And that would be, might be something that would work in a situation where you're getting into, as a C one school, like was said, you may have that opportunity, you're gonna give more opportunity for kids to play. Like right now, freshmen have to play JV and that's it, you know, and, and they'll get into varsity games if you're way ahead, or maybe way behind, you know, so, but either way.
It used to be the same situation, you know, also A Ds that said, I don't want any freshmen taking part, taking part in any varsity drills.
Yeah, yeah, that's totally separate, their practice is totally separate.
Be warmed up together and did, and then they went forward and fizzled off.
And our freshmen are right in there with us, right here, what we do, it was actually. You know, they get, they're in fire, and I, I feel sorry for them sometimes.
Sometimes they have ruined their career.
Yeah, it does, I mean, if you have an eighth grader thinking about playing in the ninth grade, it'd take a while, why wanna go out there and have them guys pounding on me every day, you know? It's not any fun, not to be a blockhead down here every day, you know?
Yeah, I feel comfortable with having some type of decision in August to, to, to have something for the junior highs or anything, that would be useful. And they, so they can get all the information. And they can leave the, for this, or something like that. We'd have to be, I, I don't see the reason that I don't need it. If we get a place that they also didn't manage. We do, we do. You know, you said, then, certainly we want a public season, but all our things, you know, all those things, everybody's all right with it, shoot for all of it.
Bob, I, I just got something I just was thinking about, you know, for our, for our junior high football kids, would it be something where, for this next year? Would it be something where we could just send a junior, one junior high coach up with the kids, and they could all work together? I mean, that way, we have our coach. Kids feel like, you know, there's a, a presence of Creighton coach, or two Creighton coaches and a Plainview coach. But yet they're still getting, or however, Creighton does our junior high, but, uh, that way, I mean, they can get to participate in junior high football for a year.
Okay, but our only concern is not just football, we have six basketball players.
Okay.
Six.
Three wrestlers.
We have more than that.
Oh, you said three last time.
We have a few more, no, not three, we had five.
Remember that?
Detolus, I'm.
We have.
We had three this year.
Yeah, we have three, we have five, we have five. So, I mean, this isn't just about boys, our, our football team, this is, I mean, we have legitimately six kids assigned up for basketball. And two kids don't turn in homework and they're on the ineligible list, we don't play basketball.
Well, exactly, I mean, and that's what we thought, I, I mean, I thought that's what it was, uh, junior high girl, uh, boys, I guess, basically, right now, it's, it was even broader. Junior high boys, uh, football, basketball, wrestling.
And we can survive in girls, but I'm not sure that the word survive is, is maybe what we want to do, we have eleven is all, and that's with every girl going out in junior high.
Yeah, and what are your expectations?
I mean, they only got enough to distribute either.
And once again, with that, with that being said, it was one of these, it was with the idea, well, we'll do it with this for now and see how it goes. I would say, I don't know how many years you wanna blow it out there, but, uh, yeah, we, we're taking baby steps, I guess, at that point. Could we add the drills in at the same time, I think that's, once again, left up to the coaches and, and the athletic director and administration to come up with a plan, and maybe beyond boys only.
But it still doesn't really help you.
I don't talk about what you're talking about.
For this year.
But you, again, if you wanna bring our, what I'm just saying, what you guys said, bring our kids here to participate, you're still acting our entire schedule. The class schedule has to be completely revamped.
Yeah, I never took that in.
I mean, you're still talking about the same things you were talking about before, so if you're gonna do it, then why don't you just do a co-op? Right? Right?
I, you guys probably talked about this, but what kinda commitment are we talking about? Are we talking year-to-year commitment, or are we talking long-term, twenty plus?
And that's, that's what we would like to decide by August, is if, at, at, at August, decide whether or not to go into a junior high for seventeen, eighteen, and then from there move on to, uh, high school co-op in eighteen, nineteen. So that's what we would like to, at that point, make some type of, either a long-term commitment to continue or, or, sorry, make all this.
Because worst-case scenario, what happens is, is we co-op high school sports for one or two years, and then we disband this thing. Because, to me, that doesn't do the kids any good.
No.
So, I guess, I don't know how you word it, but if we don't do some kind of a long-term commitment, where it takes both parties to get out of it, then I really don't know if I'd be in favor of some kind of a commitment.
And even, you know, you. But maybe more sober than I think would be just for us two schools to sustain, you know, to be able to, you know.
The other thing, if it's a year-to-year basis, it's always that gray cloud hanging over everybody's head.
And you're gonna have, you're gonna have to do another conference too, and if you're gonna wanna be mid-stage or whatever, they're gonna wanna, they're not gonna let you in for a year, about a year.
Right. That's kinda why, I guess, when Gene said build a facility out there, if we are gonna do a co-op, if we build a ten million dollar facility out there, both towns are gonna be invested. You know what I'm saying? I just don't wanna have.
I think, just to comment on what you're saying there, um, you know, as far as the high school co-op, if somebody can disagree with me or correct me on this, those are all drawn up for two years. So those are two-year commitments as far as the N S A A is concerned. But I agree with you, you need a commitment out of the communities to make it go longer if it's gonna be successful. 'Cause you can't jump in and out of it and expect it to be successful. If you're gonna go with it, then you can build your programs and make it work, but, uh, you know, you gotta have a commitment at that point, that not only these two years, but the next two years, the next two years, and the next two years, to keep it going.
And financially, you're gonna be buying all the uniforms and, you know, it's, it's.
You got, you only have a two-year contract with the N S A A, and we could have a ten-year contract, whatever you wanted.
It's all about, just like the coach said there, it's, it's all about too, you wanna play for state, the kids wanna go play for something, not just, you know, I know it's one thing to have fun, but the ultimate is going to state and winning state. So, I don't wanna get to the point where we're playing down to where we're, that we don't have that possibility either. So, once again, that's for these, I, that's what these guys have to figure out, and, uh, if they can bring up a question, they'll know when, but, but a lot of things are gonna be split in a way.
As far as, you know, being long-term or short-term, I, I, I wouldn't, and, you know, when we've ever talked about it, it's never been a short-term thing for us. I mean, I don't know mysteriously how we're gonna grow our communities, you know, it's, don't see it happening, so. I would assume, you know, I've always figured that if we were gonna do it, it was gonna be exactly what Bob's talking, we would go into a junior high for a couple of years, and then it's gonna roll into, um, high school, and then from, uh, other people that I have got friends in Laurel, and talking to Patty, it just becomes, uh, a normal thing, I mean, it's.
Junior high, you know, we don't have the, the issue of growing populations, so, you know, we're not gonna gain population, and so, yeah, it has to be long-term, to make it functional, and actually, like Tim says, be able to compete at a good level. I mean, and that's what everybody, you know, that's what, what, what his desire is, he just wanna get by, wanna be good and competitive. And, and not just athletics, but be in speech or play or whatever, you know? You know, the more, there again, competition is good there too, and that just makes everybody better.
So, you know, another example is like Howell's Dodge, it's kinda the opposite of Warshur and Clearwater. They, you know, they had the big hassle to get together to begin with, and now they're trying to expand again, you know, right? So, it must be working pretty good that they like to go at it again, you know?
Well, they don't have enough kids to play.
Yeah, they have to, 'cause enrollment's gone down to two schools.
Yeah, so. Do we need to make a motion to move in the direction of having a decision by August?
I would think, I would think, my suggestion would be you do that at your next board meeting, your, your presidential board meeting.
Okay.
And that would be my suggestion. I mean, and Stephanie and I can talk, and you can kinda come up with a wordy, you know, board, something on that, put it on the agenda for that, and then you can have some discussion about it. You know, we've had co-op and junior high activities on our, our agenda for, what, September?
I went back to Florida September.
September, I think, and, and we do a public comment on all of our board meetings, and, and, you know, welcome to public comments. But I, I think if you get it on there that this is what we're looking at, the board approve it, and then, um, that would be my suggestion.
Well, that's fine with me. Well, are we good with that? I'm good with that. Yes. Yeah, we're in there.
Well, yeah.